You know, if this population stayed right here, I win the ballot. I said, win in the ballot.
Christine's here.
That's great.
I agree with you.
That's an interesting question. It's not really a planning board meeting. It's probably a comment, so do you have to have one?
No, we don't. No, I think I could be the only person here and run the whole meeting. Bye. I'm going to skew it a little bit. Well, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. I have a couple of comments. One is I'd like to welcome all of you, especially my repeats and the newest who are coming in. We have a few things that I would like to have handled, and that will be, if you want to speak, raise your hand. We'll acknowledge you. The board will acknowledge you. They'll ask you to speak at the podium. It's going to be recorded and broadcast on our YouTube channel or wherever they put it out. As far as the, when you get to the podium and speak, I'd like to have you state your name and address. Speak to the point of the article, which is Article 24 in the warrant, and there are copies of it over there for you to read and try to not deviate from that too much. If there's any questions that you have as an audience to a board, to a person speaking, direct it to the board, and the board will either select that person to answer the question or someone who might be more qualified or add something to that. Seeing as there's nobody in the audience, and I don't mean that in an awful way, but you're so far apart, you probably can't talk to each other, but I'd want a lot of cross-talk and not upsetting the person who's speaking, disrupting them at all. And when we get done our discussion, and I would like to have everybody have all the time that they want to speak at the podium on one round, and then if someone wants to get back up and speak again, that also would be welcome. But at the conclusion, we'll end the meeting, and then I will ask the planning board for their opinion and ask the planning board to direct the chair of the planning board to a select board meeting and give a report of their findings. We're not having a professional planning board meeting where we're going to vote on anything, but I do feel that it's important that the planning board let the select board know what you thought, what we thought. Is that clear to everybody? Okay, then I will open it up. We are going to be talking only about Article 24 in the warrant, which is about an ADU. There is a wonderful little 45-page paper that Rod produced that explains the differences between the state and ours, and it goes on and on, essentially saying that ours is more restrictive, or ours is better, or ours doesn't apply to the, what is it, the first five parts of that thing. So there's very little change that's going to take place in the ordinances, in the ordinance in Owl's Head to accommodate the state's requirements, which are fairly minimal. With that, I would be more than happy to have anyone who'd like to talk and speak, please. Well, then we can close the meeting. Yeah, I agree with you too, that for.
Lynch@4150inpointroad. And it's not so much of a question as a clarification that I'm looking for. I'm trying to find out if, with the addition of the ADU, do we have a maximum amount of dwelling units that are allowed on a piece of property? What I'm reading in the ADU is if a property lot has a single-family dwelling, a single accessory dwelling unit is allowed. In our ordinance, we have a definition of dwelling unit, a definition of dwelling that allows for one or two dwelling units within it. So is the total that's allowed on the property with the doc, with what we're, what's being submitted at this time, is it two or three total that are allowed on the property? And the way that that, how do you say it?
I'm not letting you speak it out loud, so it's on the record.
Yeah.
Two.
Two. Okay. And is that made legal by the A, XA, if a property lot has a single-family dwelling unit and then a single-family, a single accessory dwelling unit is allowed? So if I'm reading this correctly, an ADU is only allowed if there is one single-family dwelling unit on a property, not a dwelling that allows for two? So am I reading that correctly?
Yep. I can get up and answer that.
Okay.
If you want.
Is that the only one?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, can we, if someone else wants to?
Would you please respond to it?
Sure.
Can you clarify that issue?
Rodney Mason, 41 South Shore Drive. Yeah, so the, just to complicate it, the current ordinance change is based on the current state law. And so the current state law and our other current ordinances, you're not allowed, that third dwelling unit would make a subdivision. So yes, it is allowed, but you have to go to the planning board to get a subdivision approved for your lot. So current properties right now that have a home with a dwelling, a dwelling with two dwelling units, and they apply for an ADU, it would be denied. So the big change for Owl's Head is now, if you only have the one single-family dwelling unit, you can, right now, our current ordinance, you can't have a separate structure as a separate dwelling unit. This will allow, you can have it inside, attached, or separate. So that's the, the big change for, for us. So, and it has nothing to do with that, but they're currently working on changing the law to change that three to four, so for subdivisions and that. But that has nothing to do with this. We're just trying to get through the current one. But I know people have been asking me about the new law, which is L. 1829, or if you want to look that up. But, so the answer is you can't have more than two.
Thank you, Rod. Is there someone else that would like to speak? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Mike Mulder, and I live at Seven Cottage Ave., and I also own Thirteen Ocean Ave. in Owl's Head, and I'm here, first of all, to thank you all, because your commitment to the selectmen and to the town. I'm relatively new here. We've owned here for seven years, Thirteen Ocean for three years now, Seven Cottage for seven years, but we're full-time. So I do have some experience in municipalities that are south of here, Portsmouth, Durham, New Hampshire, and we've been involved in development work, not only at work, but on a personal level. So we do have some, my wife and I have some experience with the municipality, and I want to thank you for your, your leadership and your commitment to it, because it's what makes a town work. So thank you very much. I'm here in support of the accessory dwelling unit. I first kind of would want to caution the planning board. I worry that if we don't adapt the state of Maine law on ADU, we open ourselves up for criticism. You know, criticism as to why we decided to not abide by the law, the state of Maine law. And the reason why I worry about that is because I've seen it south of here. When we leave ourselves open for criticism or debate, because we haven't adopted, it leads to some legal challenges. And I've seen our town in Durham, New Hampshire spend taxpayer money defending some of their decisions. I cringe. I cringe when I think we pay our taxes and we do well with that, and then we are forfeiting a portion of that off to legal fees. So I, the first comment I wanted to make is, you know, it's a bit of a defensive move in a way that, you know, if we don't abide by the state of Maine law, we're going to open ourselves to criticism. It will then lead to some legal debates, and we, as the citizens of Owl's Head, have to defend ourselves, and it costs money, legal fees to, to defend ourselves. So I wanted to make that point. I did, on a personal level, we are very much in favor of ADUs. I have a dependent adult son. We are, a year and a half ago, we really moved here, because not only did we own it in Owl's Head, but the rents, surprisingly, are a bit better than they are in Portsmouth and Dover and Durham, New Hampshire. And my son is, we're, is a dependent, and we are paying currently $1,400 a month, plus some utilities. We are semi-retired, and at some point, we will be retired. That $16,000-plus expenditure annually is not sustainable for us. So we would like to build a garage, two-car garage with an ADU above it, and that would be detached, because the garage, I would like to see it detached, and my son will live there. And that then is sustainable for my wife and I. So that's on a personal level. I've studied ADUs, not so much at Indian teachers around the years of your five pager, but I will, for sure. I am in total favor of it, not on a professional level, on a personal level. And it's, it addresses our housing crisis immediately. You know, we are all part of a group, a credit union, that we are working on an affordable housing development enforcement expansion, 200-plus, affordable meaning 60% AMI, and workforce housing, which is 80% AMI. That is such a doing, 50% of the subsidy has to come from state, from federal, from local, and ADU simply is adding a unit to an existing property, and it doesn't require all that kind of subsidy. So it's an immediate relief to a crisis that we currently have, and personally, my family has that. I don't want to call it a crisis, because we can afford it, but it isn't sustainable for the long term. Last point I would like to make is, my wife and I don't plan on moving from Owl's Head. This is an absolute beautiful, gorgeous piece of, of the world. We would like to age in place, and having an ADU is, supports aging in place. Typically, an ADU is a family, a family property, where you have a single-family home, and then you have a six, 800-square-foot ADU. Whether the, we age in place in the 600, 800-square-foot ADU, or my son, or one of my family members lives there, but they can support us in our single-family home. So instead of moving to assisted living, you know, actually nursing home, we would love to be able to plan here in Owl's Head that we have the facilities to grow old. And so those are just briefly, and I respect your time. You know, I've listened to long stories about things, and I wanted to be short and sweet. I worry about the expenditure if we choose not to support what the state of Maine has endorsed as a law. I personally would, we have an initiative. Of course, it would be under the current ordinance, I mean, under the setbacks, and would have to, would have to meet those requirements. And lastly, we really want to age in place, and ADU support that. So thank you very much for your time, and appreciate your volunteering.
Thank you very much.
Your support.
I would like to comment on your issue about the legal issues. This chair and this planning board does never want to mention it on the front page of the newspaper.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Pam, you have anything you want to say?
I mean, I can just get up and comment on things we've talked about, just, and it's sort of, Pam Holland, 289 South Shore Drive, sort of addresses a little bit about what Mike's concerned. I think if this does not pass, our CEO is then required to default to what is already passed by the state of Maine, which is less restrictive. Our 800 square feet and stuff is a little bit more restrictive. So it's sort of to our benefit to get this passed now, especially with an additional law coming up. It just buys us a little bit of time to try to figure out what we're going to do about the next law that's being passed. So I will say a fair amount of time and effort was put into the process of coming up with the specifications for it, and I think Rodney did a great job sort of simplifying the language so that people understand, like, normal water sewer line, that, you know, septic system restrictions apply and all of that. So it's not like we're just saying everyone is going to be able to do this. There's going to be some restrictions on it. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who'd like to speak, neither nor, nor, neither nor, or in favor of it? Thank you.
Can I just make a request?
Yes.
Like, it's just.
It's for the recording part of it.
Okay. I think it would be great if those of you who have spoken in favor of it, and we can get others to do that, will speak at the town meeting, because last year, we didn't get up and speak in favor, and there was some kind of cookie people that, that really rams into this, basically saying the state was going to force undocumented immigrants to come live in your house. You all recall that. So if you, the three of you and Moore can get up and speak positively, I think that would really help. Thank you.
I'm happy. Is there anything else to be brought for this public hearing? Close it, but before, before you leave, I'm going to ask the planning board for their ideas and suggestions so that I can report accurately to the select board what we heard tonight.
Consensus? Oh, no. Not what we expected.
What's the consensus of opinion? The town, the south there?
Yeah. I mean, Rodney's happy with everything. That's one, he's going to deal with it, and the set, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. You've got to have, meet the setbacks, you've got to have a septic that'll handle it, and probably in your case, you probably have city sewer up there.
Yes, we are.
You know, so I mean, that's, there's not many people in town that are on that. So, you know, that'll be something that, in your favor, in the case of Cottage Avenue would be, just not enough land.
Yes. It's, it's, partly because you've got such a soft voice.
Lawrence, first of all, 22, actually. I think what would be helpful and just, potential a little bit of what you just said. I did support the ADU amendment because of how it was written and the fact there were no restrictions on size. Other than, I mean, if I had a 3,000-square-foot home, I could have built a 2,999-square-foot home. And I think largely, that's why I wasn't supportive. I don't think many people, I don't believe many people were, went down the path of that belief system that the gentleman had presented. I think it was more, there was practically no restrictions. The state made it possible for us to adopt restrictions, and that was unratified. So I think if you could present that to the select board, just to clarify, that's the biggest reason, and the way it's written is far more logical. So just observation.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I thank you all for coming. We hope there would be 150 of you. Anyway, we will see you at town meeting on the 11th. Please come and support whatever position you have on that and the other warrant articles. Good evening. I think the new one hasn't come out.
So is someone going to present this, or just can say, "Have wire, 200,000, 200,000"? Okay, that's the select board, but then where it's written.
The person you should.
Well, I know, I'm just curious. I mean, I was usually, it's the end of the month. Right now, in one of the, I was told that people that are contesting their assessments have to look at these.
But we're having to test it if you don't know what the nil rate is. Happening, you can test it if you don't know what the nil rate is.
Or maybe you can test your valuation.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I'm saying, you can test the value. It's not the nil rate, the nil rate.
Well, at the assessment, it was me, and I can't, it wasn't, it was, I didn't, it's not for insurance.
But if you want a small enough, yeah.
What is coming out is effective asset, which of the value. Well, that's not true. He didn't, you know what I mean?
And it's certainly in your home.
15% of the market value is assessed out. That's the way he was looking at you. But there's no way if your house went up 300,000, or what's that?
And we sit down and talk, but 10 minutes, he goes, "I'm 30,000." I tell my neighbor, I says, "I could have gone in the static fry, and then I'd get another 100,000 out of something." I mean, so where they check these numbers? The point is, so, one day, one. We have to have a, a value that we're going to be assessed. You know, if I was, the nil rate and everything, I would think that would have to be in turn before they pass a budget. Because you're going to be asked to pass a budget for, you know, all these different items. He said, "Ideally, we'd like to have it at eight."
What do we have there?
15, 5. Close, I come down, you know, but. But I mean, no prices are that high at present age. You know, I mean, that's what it was. We never even mentioned it. We're, you know, that's irrelevant. But I mean, if you didn't have all the deals, because, you know, four more days after the town meeting, were people going to commit to say, well, I think it's valued at this. The more it keeps dropping, you know, the higher the nil rate, the more you burn.
The way that they determine the nil rate?
That's, that's, that was, that was kind of, whether if you guys had heard anything, when it be captured, I mean, somebody's got to do it. I don't think it's right. I think it's the assessors, it's like, you have to, the sort of, we have to report.
I said, you know, my people would.
Friends and I were playing this, said, "The sell-offs are three, you know, a trial level house, and this and that." Showed it my bad.
And he was going to ask her, she had to that, and show me which is how you qualify a property, and just type it away, and you go, "Well, we'll take it at 20, something down to 690." And we leave that.
Yeah.
We go, yeah, okay. I don't know what to stop with it. I mean, it was definitely on the value, but I, what's happened, they've been evaluating for the last.
Oh, my God.
My baby, we did. I don't know. I've talked to my neighbors, and, you know, they've had some issues, but. Well, you say, you'll see the deal a lot until the trees grew up on the other side of the road and down the condos. I mean, it's, you know, I'd go like this, you know, and, you know. It was just, getting from my life, you know, I'd be contested, because if I was going to sell it, I guess it would be the asking price that I was going to ask, you know, from what, what I've seen. I was waiting on the town, and actually kind of say, "This is what you've challenged." And they, it's, it's much, how, what the nil rate is, and how you establish a nil rate, and everybody is appeasing. We go to the next step with those.
Is there a cut-off stage?
Even the full draw, I guess.
Then if you could test it, you know, you have to actually go for it. Second of all, there's got to be another way to, to question the value. Nothing but with it. Just saying, one of the guys up ahead of the day that tried to play hot shoes with, I know, he's quite the man to play hot shoes, but he just said, his house was valued at something, something on, built a will, a Zillow, and they had, they had him down for like 11 different things on Zillow listed. They were all wrong on his house, and those same things were on the assessment.
So that's the, it's a different view.
Yeah. Well, that's what he wondered. He goes, you know, they had me down for paid driveway, got a gravel driveway. They had him down for this, and he goes, "No, I don't have that." So he was wondering, you know, if something, he goes, you know, I haven't talked to him, but I mean, I know a lot of, you know, and, he just said, "No, I'm going to test this," you know, in the end, because, you know, I don't know what he got that with, I've never did hear the numbers, but.
So is that firm, the nil rate?
No, he said, the kid in here that I talked to, he just said, "We were hoping for eight, realistically, 10," because I said, you know, you know, "We're going to have it down to five, right?" And he went, I think so.
When you say the kids and the sex.
Yeah, the, yeah, the kid, yeah. It's a, it's a social son, I guess, is what I remember. They come up with those numbers somewhere.
But how do you do it if you're on the nil rate?
Yeah, and I don't think anybody could be able to say that at a town meeting. I mean, I don't know if you'd know in two weeks even, but I mean, it was just, but I would, you know, maybe I was wrong on the 15th, because it can update, but I, I talked to one of my neighbors who was going to meet with him, because he was up at his camp in northern Maine, and just, I gotta get back down here and meet with him. That's why he's only here Mondays, Mondays and Thursdays.
Yeah.
And he goes, but he come in, I just said, "Look," I put him down, and just soon as he was done with something, he took me right in. So, because I don't even have email or anything, so, he said, "Don't, if you can't believe him, tell the girls anything, because that's not part of their role's job." So I just took a chance, you know, he was there, and now he has. So, but no, it was just, or something along the way, that somebody's going to say, "This is a firm nil rate, but we're going to have this." And I think people don't want to know that at the town meeting, but.
Well, we know at the town meeting, all that, then we got four days.
Yeah.
I got a ton of money. Well, I, I have confidence in my insurance, and they still have a new insurance company, and they insisted on coming and doing, you know, maybe house, you know.
That's going to be more and more now, because there are, especially groups, you know, that's a big thing.
Oh, we just did a group. That's almost reasonable. But it was unbelievably high, and I said, and the square footage was way off. And so I, that's when I sat with him, and he gave me this nice, you know, the map and the square footages, and it was. and it was really helpful, I got my insurance way down.
Good. Does he mind, I didn't, you know, like, he had my shed, which is sixteen by twenty-two, my barn was twenty-four or something, and, you know, the house, everything was perfect on that, because Steve Cook did all that measurements on his coffee.
But that insurance company.
Right.
And they, that they put evaluation on the pilot. I mean, on every, this insurance company.
We've got anyone that, yeah, so they said, they'd be coming.
Yeah. But it's paid from all those disasters.
But I mean, once, but it's going to hurt people that are, you know, on fixed income, and, you know.
It's a lot of people. It's me.
Do you want to say, yes, for these?
No, I don't know, they may be in the office.
I just want, no, those are all, all of them.
It's my husband, Carl, all the time.
I know, Bill up there.
How do they know?
How you doing?
Hi.
Good to see you. Remember me?
Yes, I did.
Town meeting, but I don't know where you said.
No, they always said it after the town meeting.
Oh, I do.
Because they have to prove the budget, match up all the stuff.
Oh, how much after?
Well, usually, they traditionally have done it right after.
Yeah.
But last year, they made a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mathematical mistake, which kind of messed us up. So the assessor said, you know, we don't want to do that again. He said, so I'd like to have a week of making sure we go over the numbers.
Okay, but then.
It'll be a week or two.
Okay, but Bill just said that we're not going to know what our taxes are, so how do we appeal?
You can't appeal until you get the first tax bill anyways.
Is that right?
Yeah. Now, right now.
But who do we appeal to?
To the assessors.
Okay.
Yeah. The actual next step, county?
If the assessor, the assessor, the actual, the select board is actually the, also the assess, the board of assessors. They're elected at the town meeting, it's one of the articles. And so what happens is, you would appeal to the assessor, he'd bring it to the select board, and he'd make a recommendation, and they'd vote to support an appeal or deny it or whatever. If they deny it, then you can go to the county assessors.
But then the town could lose, if they don't have the money it needs for the budget, if he starts cutting.
Well, that's why, yeah.
There's some.
What they do is, yeah, they have what's called an overlay. This is all stuff I've just learned in the last few months. It's called an overlay, and what it is, is it's, they take the mil rate and make it high enough so that you've got enough money to cover basements, and, and they typically, they have recommendations for percentages. And then we also have our regular savings account, that they have recommendations where you keep it at a certain, it should be ten to twelve percent of your budget. Yeah. And currently, the town has seventeen and a half percent of our budget, or at the end of last year. So the, the town's doing well. You know, I see the biggest problem is cash flow, because from now until tax bills and we start getting money, the school's four hundred thousand dollars a month, and every month. Yeah, we only, we got one point three million, so that's three months.
Yeah, four hundred thousand a month, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety-one percent of our taxes is.
Ninety-one percent?
Ninety-one.
Somewhere between, yeah. It's, I would say ninety, but it's right up there, if you do a pie chart, you know. Like, I could eat the piece of pie that we all cost, but the, you know, the county and the school could feed the whole family.
Well, Chris said the school budget went up seven percent, and the county budget went up nine percent. So we have no control over the other, you know.
You can vote on the school, but it always passes, and if it doesn't pass, they just do it.
They bring all the teachers in the vote bar. That's why most people, you know, well, I used to be, we'd have like ten items on the school. You could vote, you know, administration.
Yeah.
Transportation, adult education.
So you could vote, yes, yes, no.
And then all of a sudden, now, you vote the school budget, yes or no?
Yeah. And you see the second question, they're trying to get it so that they don't even have to have a vote, you have to go to, kind of like our annual meeting at the school board, basically, and vote by hand.
Well, that's what that second question, I thought it blanked, because I hadn't heard anything about it, and I think if you know, hiding a vote.
I said, no, get, get people to come out and vote, not, because, you know, no one's going to drive in and vote by hand, I don't know. Yeah, but it's kind of moving, I mean, they're going to do it.
Yes, yeah, and they'll just keep appealing it until it gets passed, so. That's why I think some people get so discouraged with going to vote, you know, because of, you never know what.